Six thirty, we'll go ahead and call meeting order, open prayer for the Ricky Dotson pledge. My bitch, Tom Saff.
I'll pray. Well, praise to heaven, Father, I thank you for this great day you give us, I thank you for life of, and the life of Bumby you give us every day, Father. Lord, I just pray for Julie Post again tonight, Father, I pray for her every day, I just ask you continue to heal her body and get her back whole and back to work, Father. Lord, I say everything we do here tonight will be pleasing first and foremost to you and be for the people and the children of Overton County, Father. But just as you lead, God directs us in every decision we make, for it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could get a motion to approve minutes from the January nineteenth. I'll make that motion. Motion by Ricky Dotson.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five additions and deletions to the proposed agenda. We need to delete number one off executive action items. Is there any others?
The camera.
Yeah, the cameras, number one, they're on exact two items. Uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alice Reed.
Second.
Second by William Abson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And also need to get a approval for the February thirteenth agenda now. Motion by Wayne Taylor.
I second it.
Second. Shirley Myers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move to executive items. We're going to number two. It's approved low bid of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents for Surface Pro. Devices from HPI International. Can I get a motion?
I encourage.
Motion. Shirley Myers.
I'll second that.
Second by Alice Reed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going too fast for them. Number three, approved low bid of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars for HBAC replacement at Livingston Academy from Lee Company. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mike Hayes.
I'll second.
Second by William Abson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to consent items. Uh, I'll just read them all through and then we'll, we'll vote them all at one time. Uh, number one, consider approval of quarterly reports, that's attachment one. Uh, number two, consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four HQIM revision two. Number three is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Carl Perkins basic revision number seven. Number four is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four ESR three-point-oh revision four. Number five is consider approval of one forty-one fiscal year twenty-four general purpose schools revision number five. Number six is consider approval of Livingston Academy FBLA overnight trip to state convention. April seventh, twenty twenty-four to April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve all those?
So moved.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer.
Second.
Second by Ashley Park. All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to some new business. Uh, number one is consider second reading of approval of the following board policies as recommended by TSBA. Policy one point one oh two, board member policy. Number one point one oh five, school board legislative improvement. Policy one point seven oh one, school district planning. Policy one point nine, charter schools authorization principles. Policy one point nine oh one, charter schools application. Policy one point nine oh two, charter schools agreement. Policy one point nine oh three, charter schools oversight. Policy one point nine oh four, charter schools intervention. Policy one point nine oh five, charter schools renewal. Policy one point nine oh six, charter schools revocation. Policy two point four, revenues. Policy two point six oh one, fundraising activities. Policy two point eight oh five one, debit, debit cards, credit cards and credit means. And policy six point two, attendance. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by my case.
Second.
Norman Hicks. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, consider approval of microbiology as a special course offered at Livingston Academy. Can I get a motion? Motion by Shirley Myers.
Second.
Second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion?
Uh, I got a quick question.
I don't like the story.
Thanks, Shirley.
Sorry.
Was that your question?
No.
I believe the answer to that Shirley will be next school year.
I would think so.
Yeah. I've got a little information that, uh, I wasn't a hundred percent certain about that, so I gathered up a little information in case anyone did ask anything. Norman, you go ahead and I'll, and I'll mention what I, what I know about it.
Do we have someone currently qualified for this or is this gonna be another position?
Yes. Yes. No, we do have someone already. Look, let me tell you what a little, what I know about this because that kinda caught me off guard some too. But the, the Department of Education allows us to develop special courses. And Kim Goodpasture, one of our teachers over there now, has worked, uh, in this field before she was a teacher, becoming a teacher, she worked in a lab. And, uh, and there's a need for our students that are going into that medical field. Since she felt that experience, the Department of Education lets us, uh, lets us do this. But board approval is needed, but it's my understanding now that we've done this in the past. And, uh, and we're just, we're re-upping it again.
So would that count as a science course or an elective?
Science?
Okay.
Would you take a biology license to teach it?
I should have checked, but I don't know. I would think so, I would think so. I, I can't really quote off exactly what her license gives, but I would think so.
How many students do we expect to take this?
I don't know, uh, they told me that there was a need and that, uh, that there's, there's always several that do, that do take it. Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we've already made that one, sorry. Back up. Sorry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, consider approval of Overton County ESA opposition resolution. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Alice Reed.
Second.
Second by Norman Hicks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval to add one bus mechanic physician. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ricky Dotson, second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, one stipulation or, uh, attachments be put on it, they'd have to get their CDLs within at least a year if they've not got them. Whoever it is.
That's a good idea. To be honest, I thought we had that on there. I thought I had that on there.
So that would just be in their application?
Yeah.
We could put that on the bench, you know, they have it or, or get it, we'll, we'll put that on there.
What other requirements are gonna be?
This will be a certified mechanic?
I don't know the answer to that. I know Jackson's certified, I don't.
I think we should probably post it certified.
Being I have to get somebody else, y'all personnel school is gonna stay there for a long time.
Will that be certified decent mechanic or certified just ASE?
I say ASE.
Well, that's what I, that's what I got into when I was checking, uh, the last time, uh, I was checking to see if they were truthful mechanic certified and if they're, if they're not, but they're ASE. Is that, did that answer your job? Did that answer your question?
Not positionally higher, is it gonna be requirement that they are certified?
Well, if they had ASE.
I know, I know we, I know we had one. And I mean, that should be sufficient, but at the same time, we're planning. You know, uh, a comparable rate for mechanics. I would expect that they would have comparable.
If we get a decent mechanic, I think Lou Bird or Thomas, they start at thirty dollars an hour. For a decent mechanic, where we buy the buses from.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be a requirement, I'm just asking if it is more than. As long as we have one that can oversee the, everything meets, meets the department's specs and is repaired properly. They should suffice. My only other question is, and it doesn't just pange to this one, but, uh, the other position as well. Do we have reoccurring, not even those, these positions on this agenda? What I thought was we would, we would make sure that in the, in the accounting budget, we'd make sure that we had some to cover.
Any other discussion? All in favor, approve, consider to add one bus mechanic physician. Say aye. This right here will probably have to be a roll call vote because we're creating a position, we'll be spending. Sorry.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
And Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four zero.
Number five, consider to add one IT position. Can I get a motion? I'm sorry, Shirley Myers.
We like that.
Hey, can I get a second? Mitch Stonecifer. Any discussion?
Is one IT position all we need or do we need, or we need to look at more in the future?
Well, if, if you remember earlier in the year, I, I started a little bit of, and I, I didn't get around to it. It was, it was mentioned earlier in the year, do we need someone, when I asked Mr. Thrasher, he said, he said no back several months ago, maybe at the beginning of this year. He just come to me and he said, at this, at this point, one would be beneficial at this point. And he's, he's got lots of ideas of, of things of using this person a little bit different to, to, to be a real asset to the schools, he's gonna use this one. He's got some ideas to do differently with this one. But he, he said one, he thought would do it.
And that may be something that we just get with him and ask too, would it be beneficial to have another position on that there? Cause I mean, we're, all of our schools have computers and computer systems that need to be maintained and all of that, so wanna make sure that we have adequate staff to.
One, one, I'll, I'll go out on a limb and mention this that, that he had mentioned to me. He was looking at this new person and, and, and I'm not sure if he's a hundred percent set on this, but he had mentioned having this person, having a schedule for this person to go out, like stay all one day at this school. And then another day go to this school for the, and hopefully have it where the, the schools would know that this person is gonna be at my school like every Wednesday morning or every all day on Wednesday or something like that. So that they could, they could save a lot of little questions up to them at that point, you know, so.
I think that's a great idea.
And that was, that was what Mr. Thrasher had come up with and I, I thought, I agree, I thought it sounded good. Any other discussion?
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ten-four zero.
And move on to number six, consider approval to add one school resource officer to Reach Academy. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alice Reed. Second by Ashley Park. Any discussion?
I, I think Dr. Holman answered this last meeting, but you did say they had somebody trained and ready to go, right?
I did.
Okay.
And that's what, uh, Mr., uh, he mentioned that, he said that they had someone out there that they, they could give for this, you know, in a timely manner, real timely manner. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take a roll call.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four zero.
We'll move on to number seven, consider approval of certified supplement, supplement and pay schedule. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Norman Hicks, second by Ashley Park. Any discussion? Anyone have a question?
These are supervisors and principals, aren't they?
And assistant principals, yes.
On board.
Thank you, Shirley.
I've been trying to inch that, that way for a while.
Someone just got a conflict of interest here, should announce that. That's true.
I don't have a conflict.
Does this blame Shirley though?
I would think so.
Yeah. There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and take a roll call.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes, and I do have a conflict.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes, and I do have conflict.
Uh, James Klaus?
Yes, and I do have a conflict.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ten-four zero.
Number eight, consider approval of two thousand five hundred dollars ESL supplement for teachers assuming additional responsibilities for ESL student initiative and reporting. This will include a differentiated, differentiated pay plan next year. Can I get a motion in a second? I'll make that motion. Motion by Ricky Dotson. Second by Norman Hicks. Any discussion?
How many are there?
Three. I would like to say a word or two here on this one, if you don't mind. Our, our number of ESL students is going up, uh, it's, it's increasing all the time. And, and it's now at various schools as opposed to, at one time it was just at a couple. And, and in order for us to make that requirement, the requirement for these students is one hour per day per student. One hour per day per student of instruction. And, uh, we're, what we're doing here by this twenty-five hundred is we're utilizing some of our regular education teachers that have that ESL endorsement. And, and this is in addition to their regular duties. And by us doing this twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, this is, at this point, this is saving us from having to hire a totally another ESL full-time teacher. This is, uh, in, in my, when looking at, this is kinda band-aiding us for a little while without us having to hire another person. I think at some point, there'll come a time when, when we'll have to hire, hire another one, another one at some point. Right now, we can use this and it's, and, and it'll, it'll take care of that for, for a while.
Or are these three teachers from the schools?
There's, there's two at AH and there is, uh, there's two at AH and one at, um. Jennifer Thiel is our ESL teacher, she's at the high school. And there's two here and just give me one second, not two. And one of you, Ms. Reddington, that was the other one, I couldn't think of her. There's three.
Supposedly you just had one child in the school who would take care of everything.
If there was just one child in the school, uh, well, one of these, one of these people would, and at the beginning, at the beginning, so far at the beginning of the year, what we've done is we look group, uh, at their number of ESL students and where they're at. And sometimes we zoom in, we've been able to zoom in, uh, like at Wilson sometimes. If I'm not mistaken, Lisa Coyle over here at AH has, has, uh, worked with some of the, uh, ESL students at Wilson through the Zoom, through the computer, uh, and it works. And, and then, uh, if I'm not mistaken, we have one child at Reach and, and we bust that child over to the hospital here in the day. So we do all sorts of things to make sure we get this.
One hour.
One hour a day. So we, we've done some creative things to, to get it to work.
Would that be taught, uh, that hour in an after-school program? Does it have to be during the school day?
Uh, I, I don't know the exact answer to that, but we're doing our best.
Might be an idea, right.
We're doing, we're doing our best to get it done during the school day, is what we're trying to do.
It's certainly needed, I was visiting Wilson. I think that been last year in preschool. A little boy's dad spoke Spanish, his lover spoke French.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, I don't, um, I, I'm very impressed with how these people, how well they do, how well they work with these with such a language barrier. Years ago, I was, I was impressed with this, uh, that they do such a good job, I commend them for what they do. Any other discussion? I guess we need to roll call this one also.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
And Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four zero.
And number nine, consider approval of reward school, bonus payment of a thousand dollars for certified staff and two hundred fifty for support classified staff. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion by Norman Hicks. Second by Mitch Stonecifer.
Go ahead, sorry, no, we gotta take discussion. Yeah, we're open for discussion. Go ahead. I, I didn't wanna just say a word or two about that. The, the funding for this, uh, compensation initiative, uh, would come from the outcomes funding of the TESA plan, of the TESA formula. And, and that TESA formula is the, is our, replaced our old big EP formula. And, and the reward school status is, is currently embargoed. It, I have been told that that information would be released on Friday, uh, after the, after the State Board of Education approves all that. But I will say this, we're very excited about the upcoming announcement. And, uh, and since I've been at the central office, I have continually encouraged and promoted our schools to work hard toward this state-recognized status. And, and, and why have I encouraged this so much? Here's, here's a big sentence that I, I, I really feel strongly about. It is so much more than test scores. I mean, test scores are important, test scores are how we as a district are graded, true. But it is, it is so much more than just the test scores. This, this is an everyday goal, it's an everyday push. And, and it's all about high expectations that we have for our students, uh, and for our schools. And creating schools that are, that are well-rounded schools and creating schools that, that our parents in the community want their children to go to. That's, that's what a reward school is, is creating a good, healthy school that parents want their kids to go to. And, and I wanna say another thing here to, to prevent a problem, hopefully. Uh, please understand that all of our schools are good schools. But reward schools have simply met a certain mark that has been set by the state. They, they've met the mark and, uh, they've crossed that, that line, um, to a point of high recognition. They, they've met the mark. And as, as we've talked as a board before and I've talked to all the administrators, I've talked to all of our faculties about this. In order to be a reward school, you're, you're to score, your school is to score a three-point-one out of, uh, out of four on this scale. And the three areas, well, for elementary schools, the three areas that they're judged in are achievement and growth and chronic absenteeism. And, and, and I have really, uh, talked and talked and preached this, uh, since I've, since I've been here. And, um, and, and I only want the best for the students of Overton County. And, and since, since it appears that, uh, Friday, the announcement will be that, uh, we will have, we will have some reward schools, which I'm overly excited about. I, I really want to see those schools compensated, I want them to see that, that, uh, we, we seriously appreciate what they've done to, to get to that point. And Overton County School has been fortunate enough to have reward schools in the past. But we've never had, uh, what we foresee to be announced this Friday before. Let's just say it that way, we've never had the number that we foresee being announced on Friday. And, uh, and, uh, and I think that this incentive pay that we've discussed, the incentive pay, I think that will be like planting seeds in, in the future for what we want our school system, the direction that we want our school system to go. And we're using the outcome funding for that. I, I'm, I'm very excited about it. I, I, I look at this like as an investment in our future of the direction that we want our school system to go, so.
And this will be just for this year, next year will be pending over?
Yeah, now next year will be pending funding. Next year will, if we, if we decide to do something with this next year, and I hope this goes so well that we do, uh, that it would be pending funding. But the, the money, what we're doing now though, what, what we would be paying now would be for last school year, last school year. And the funding that we received, the outcomes funding that we have received was based on last year. So we're using last year's funding to pay incentives for last year's, uh, employees, so.
And just to be clear on that there too, we haven't received this funding before.
That's a real, really, really good point. Yeah, uh, we've had, like I said, we've had reward schools in the past, but we never had outcomes funding in the past. This is the first time we've ever received that. So we are taking that, that funding and using it like as an, like I said, in my mind, as an investment to, to compensate for the good work done. And that doesn't mean that the other schools aren't good schools, it's just that these have crossed that line and we want to say, in my, in my way of looking at it, it's like we're saying, thank you for the, for the good job you've done.
Could you define who the support in classified staff is?
Yeah, I, I can, I can sum that up pretty good. That's everybody, that's everybody that's not a teacher. So that would be your secretaries, your cafeteria workers, uh, bus drivers. This morning on the way to school, I counted that, uh, I, well, uh, I called, I called to see how many bus drivers were at this school and that school, you know? Uh, so we could get a tentative guess as to, you know, that's the expense. But bus drivers, cooks, educational assistants, custodians, those are the.
That'd be great, that they talk to everybody.
Well, um, I, I think a, a good point we need to make right here at this point is, and I've said this for years and every principal does, but it takes everybody in the school building. It takes everybody in the school building to make that school successful, so.
So if we get the funding each year, there would be a possibility of always doing this or continuing it for reward schools as long as the funding came from the state?
That, that's, that's exactly what my hope is, is if funding permits, if funding permits, I'd love to be, and I'd love for this to go over so well that we want to do this in the, in the, in the future.
And every school be.
And I want every school to be a reward school. And then, and, and I hope everyone remembers that little sentence that I said earlier about it's so much more than a test score, you know? This is, this is just a good indication of a good, well-rounded school for, for people. And, and all of our schools, by the way, all of our schools. And, and all of our schools, by the way, all of our schools really do care about the students individually and stuff. But this is just rewarding those that, that met the mark, so to speak. Any other discussion? Need to roll call this one also.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stone Sapper?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Jarman Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
James Clouse?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
And William Abston?
Yes.
Oh, ten four, ten, yes.
We'll move on to special recognition, OCA. Like to thank Philip Tally, our county commissioner, for being here. We don't have any public comments, and then we'd also like to mention Terry Smith acquired state electrical, electrician license, so that was a big thing. Yeah, we got, we got two clean here in the central office, got a little reward a while back. Ms. Sherry Webb and Crystal Nelson got a reward. She can tell you all about it. Tell us, Sherry.
Sherry tells all better.
Tell us, Sherry.
It was a certified financial officer. We took ten, or I guess it lasted a year, we took classes once a month. And it was through C-TAS, and now we're certified with the state as a certified financial officer.
Congratulations. Thank you for having us.
Could we go back? Could I, could I go back and ask and say one thing about some of these, hope again? On number nine, we had discussed that. Could we, could we make that one, uh, on the Bay Paycheck?
On the what?
Number nine, number nine, a reward school.
I thought, I thought we, we should, we talked about when, when they, when they come about. Is it okay, is it okay to go back and do that?
It's a, it's approved, so.
You can do it whenever.
We did it approved.
So whenever God releases our aid.
Okay, whenever.
Yeah, I guess the next available.
What, what I've got in, what I've got in mind on, on, on that one is, is the May paycheck. The May paycheck. And then on number seven, the Certified Supplement Pay Still. What I have in mind on that one is making it, that the April paycheck. That's your discretion. That's taken on the April paycheck. That's what I have in mind, because we all know that, and that's a good thing. Eight pulling made. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Can I get a motion adjourned? I added. Motion adjourned. Second. Second, ready, done. All in favor, say aye. Uh, we're going into work session. And the only thing we've got right now is, uh, discussion, goal one, part G of the five years strategic plan. Everyone, I, I put you all like copies of the strategic plan in your, uh, in your, uh, packet. Don't worry, we're not going to go over a, a great deal of it. But if you will turn over to page two, page two deals with goal one, which is facilities, building maintenance and operation. And, uh, the last time Ms. Connie was here, one of the main things that she added to that was part G down at the bottom that is in, in yellow. And if you read that, it says that, that we, that I would have a dashboard or a spreadsheet developed for you all to see and, and be able to make reference to about, um, about the, about buildings and, and projects that we are doing here in our maintenance department. Uh, so, but we've been, we've been working on that. And I'll just be honest with you, I didn't know what plot and how I wanted this to be done. So, but what I did in all honesty was I went to Brent Thrasher and explained to him what I wanted. And he did it.
Very slow.
I knew what I wanted, but Brent did it. And I've got it pulled up over there, and I know you can't see from here, but I'm going to zoom in on it so that you can see, um, see a little bit, um. Okay, let, let me go down there, let me, very, um, here is the whole, is the whole spreadsheet. And I know you can't see those columns right now, but I'm going to zoom in to the various columns and, and tell you what this is. I'm going to start here. Like the first, the first column is the project title. So, and I'll, I'll go, we'll just go across the first one so that you can see an example of it. The first one is the first thing that, that I, when I first started up here, one of the first things I was very interested in was remodeling the, uh, school bathrooms at Livingston Academy. So the first one is LA bathrooms. And then the second column here, if you can see this one, uh, it's the status of it, it's complete. Where at is it Livingston Academy? Uh, the next one, the funding source, what paid for that? Essor One paid for that one. The completion date was twelve one, twenty twenty one. And there's a complete description of it, which I just told you, the LA remodel of classroom, of the bathrooms at LA. And then here's the cost of it. That cost sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. So I just went across there and gave you an example of one. But as you can see, let me see here, there are, um, there are thirty of those that we did. There are thirty of those items that, that we completed. And you'll be able to look at those and see that Essor One or Two or Three or whatever paid for that, or the general GP paid for it. And also, I wish I could say I did this, but Brent did it. But when you go to a different tab here, if you look at this pie chart, uh, project complete, so all, out of all the ones that we're looking at, you can see the blue is complete and the orange is still in progress. So we've got the, the vast majority of them done. Now, one other thing I wanted to say to you, a lot of these projects are projects that when we went around each one of the schools and the fall, uh, and we just, we were looking at things that we could get done before the building program, a lot of those are listed up here. Projects by site, this column here, uh, projects by site. Uh, it has each one of the schools and it tells you how many, how many were completed at each one. For instance, uh, there was four in LA, and there was, uh, four in Allen's, and one at Reach, and so forth. Here's another one. This chart here shows us, um, you, you may not can see it, but the blue color, uh, let's see, the green color is the ELC grant. That was the, uh, uh, the epidemiology, uh, grant that we had. That was the green one, number four there. And, uh, the light blue is GV, and, and this is, this is where the money came from for these projects. Now here's, here's this, this other one here that I wish I could say, say I did, but Brent did. It's by year, projects by year. How many of those we accomplished in twenty-one, in twenty-two, and in twenty-three? As you can see, in twenty-three, we got fourteen accomplished there. And I realize that you all can't see that and can't, uh, benefit a lot from it being on the screen, but at least I gave you an overview on the screen. But in the morning, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share this with you, share this, uh, document with you. And then you can, you can open it up at any time you want to and, and look at it steady. If you've got a question, call us and I ask. Does anyone have a question about this now? But anyway, this address is one G on the, on the, on the strategic plan.
The safety is in this goal one, too, is it not?
Yes.
That film we were going to put on the doors, is it ordered or? We don't talk about it?
Well, I, I, I guess we do need to talk about that. But when the, when that committee met, when that committee met, uh, one of the options that they, that they could have selected from was to, was, that was one of the options that they selected from. When that committee met, the vast majority of that committee decided that they were, there were other things that they were interested in more than the film, more than film. So they're doing, they're doing some other things.
And who is that committee?
Um, I would have to tell, uh, I can think of some that was on it, but I can't think of everyone. There was a couple of SRO members that was on it, uh, Jenny Smith was on it, and, um, give me just one minute, the safety committee. And Ryan Ledbetter, yes.
There used to be a school, school board members too, right?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I just knew that my daughter-in-law, that teaches in Williamson County. And it may be because the cost wasn't prohibitive with them. But they've gotten it for all of their older schools and have it ordered for their, they're going to replace their new.
But going forward, though, I still am in hopes that we will, we'll be able to, uh, do some of this in the future. Even though that allotment of money, we didn't use that particular allotment of money that, I, I, I felt like we would. But when the committee met, they decided to do other things instead of that.
Hey, while we're talking about buildings real quick, uh, we did learn yesterday that in the proposed budget this year, there is millions of reoccurring funds for maintenance.
They're going to tie that to each state maintenance funds?
That will be going to schools. So as long as that's approved and goes through, they've got quite a bit of money here marked back just for school buildings and facilities, maintenance, which we have never gotten before.
I think part of that safety, you know, they're working at improving the school safety wise and the maintenance has to happen. Or I like to this.
On the safety committee that I was talking about a minute ago, that money is still being spent though for safety issues, but I'll think every bit of that is, is, it's still being spent in a very beneficial manner. It's just not for the film. They, they selected other things, but it's still beneficial.
I wanted to mention something as well. It doesn't have to be take here and now, by the time the school starts back. Next year, Allen School doesn't have as many janitors per child and square footage as the other schools. They only have two and a half. When I say half, I mean half-time, part-time maintenance. Say the other schools are comparable in size have three and a half. And so they feel like that they really need some more. And, uh, I just thought I needed to bring that to your attention, to make you aware of it. That by the time the school starts back next year, that we could have that decision.
Sure. Sure, you got it, Ben?
No, I said all right.
Yeah, um, Thursday at two o'clock, I've got a meeting set up with Brian Templeton with Upland Design. So we'll talk about the initial work that he'll need to do for the building program for Richmond Allen's Hillham and the LIE cafeteria. Uh, so we'll have that initial conversation at two, if anybody wants to. I tell you, he'll be here, here at the central office, two o'clock.
Two o'clock, right.
James, did we need to mention anything about?
Thursday, Thursday at fifteen, sorry.
Do you want to partner with the board to?
Probably wouldn't hurt. But I'll, I'll get to that whenever. Okay, William, you got it.
Um, I didn't want to. When we were in this meeting that, um, they were telling about the TESA funding and everything. One thing that, um, I think that you need to be brought aware of, Dr. Holman and some of the supervisors, is they mentioned that in the contracts that come up for renewal, uh, for the next year and everything, we need to be careful in reviewing those for AI processes and different things that they may have in there just to, um, check and make sure that information's not being used in ways that it should not be.
Review contracts for AI processes?
Yep, um, because they said that a lot of these contracts that were signed during, uh, COVID and everything, that the way that they do it is they use AI to gather the information, sort through the information, and give you a summary of the data on that. And depending on where that's stored or there, that could cause potential risk for us, uh, of the information getting out.
Thank you, Ben. I, I'd like for us to recognize the, the Richmond Boys Bantam Team for winning the James C. Hale State Tournament. Really proud of them. Uh, I'd also like to recognize, uh, Gunnar Robbins, who's a sixth grader at Richmond, and Drew Smith is a sixth grader at Allen's for winning the Bassmaster Open in Georgia recently. Uh, this is a, a major accomplishment, and these two students are now qualified for the national championship tournament. So really proud of them. And, um, this, uh, this, this Drew Smith, uh, these boys evidently were interviewed and, uh, and Drew Smith, uh, I would send a quote that he said, he said, "I'll look back in thirty years from now and remember this moment." So, um, he, he, I mean, this was a, this was a really a big event for them. I'd also like to thank, uh, Brandon Cross, their, their coach, for all that he does. He, he really gives it a hundred percent. And, uh, and also seeing some success in, in this tournament was Orbin and Case and Crabtree, uh, who represented our county in Georgia as well. So, uh, I always like to see our, our students recognized. Congratulations. I'll add. One thing we, we need to bring up also is, uh, the PTO has approached us about three, sealing of the parking lot at Allen's. It's starting to fall apart and getting some pretty good toss cracks in and stuff, so it's something that we need to look at. I, I don't remember the number, anyway.
Uh, I think they said the lowest bid was fourteen thousand, and they wanted to partner with us. And I think they intended to pay half of it to see if we could pay the other half. Is that not correct?
I, I think, uh, is that?
Uh, well, could, the, the building program.
Well, I, when I meet with the architect Thursday, I'll get with Mr. Mosley, uh, because we had originally, to reseal strip every parking lot, but it was going to be like, don't quote me exactly, maybe like a hundred and forty thousand. And at one point, he only had enough money. That wasn't approved through Essor. He had enough money just to approve to patch, uh, some of them. And I think Ms. Johnson had redid the addendum for the Essor Three, what was left over. We put that on there, but I'm thinking maybe the parking lot and one more thing didn't get approved and everything else did. But I'll double-check that with Steve.
And, and that's what I was in, I was in hopes that, that we could do that.
Yeah.
And help them.
Right.
That's, that was my plan, because I, they, they sent me an email.
And I just need to get an update from Steve anyway, because all that Essor we have to have done by June thirtieth of this year, so.
I know, looking at it too, there may be some spots that just may need some more paper.
It is approved that year.
Yeah, it, it's been cut up two or three times and resealed and patched. But this last snow, I think, kind of threw a lot of it in. That's all I have. Anything else?
This is a tournament, it's a high school. Players, four girls play at four o'clock Thursday, Friday. Four o'clock, Friday, and the boys play at five-thirty, Tennessee Tech.
Did I make that?
Yeah.
Fourth week is spring break.
I gotta get that one.
Week is spring break. Second week, March, spring break, where the time changes that Sunday?
It's the tenth. It changes the tenth. Our board makes it the twelfth.
We canceled the fourth. We did cancel it.
So we'll meet during spring break.
I think the calendar we had laid out had it the week after.
I was going to say, one time they talked about having it, not in spring break.
Yeah, when Crystal did the calendar for the full year, I'm pretty sure she said it.
The ninth or nineteenth.
It's March, immediately the nineteenth.
Yeah, the meet, the meet was scheduled for the nineteenth.
It's up there at twelve, but it'll be the.
It's the third Tuesday in, uh, March.
Yeah, I think it'll be the nineteenth.
I can look up exactly here. Spring break is, I mean, follow, you said spring break?
Spring break.
The one that's coming up in March.
Oh, the one in March.
So we'll meet the third Tuesday, right? The nineteenth? Thank you, Alex.
It's March eleventh through fifteenth, spring break.
And we meet the one after.
Yeah, the nineteenth.
The third. Yeah. I thought we talked about that, that and something.
Get them, get them up.
Okay.
Good thoughts on that, Sharon. That good?
How are we, how are we on, um, snow days?
Got three left.
We, we, we hit up.
Your fingers, did we?
I was up in Florida this morning hoping I didn't see much snow, though.
I ran right, I just ran to the window this morning to see the buses. I ran right, I just ran to the window this morning to see if the buses could get down the road. They could. I think they, of course, they must have gotten a lot more than anybody else.
Hey, Wade, John, let you just move back.